Good evening. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council Workshop for November 14th, 2022. Calling Kristen Rush.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Very good. We've got two workshops tonight. Ms. Gillis, you want to kick us off?
This first item on the Old Town Strategic Reinvestment Plan will be presented by Community Economic Development Director Ryan Stachowski.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm going to kick off the presentation tonight and then turn it over to our consultants from Dig Studio. This Old Town Strategic Reinvestment Plan is really the continuation of a conversation that we've been having for a while. As you all recall, through the COVID pandemic, we leaned forward quite a bit and allowed for temporary street closures in Old Town. Those street closures were so popular that we leaned further even more, and we considered them to be semi-permanent, making some significant investments in Old Town. We did that in a positive and quick way, but we also recognized the fact that we were moving so quickly that we wanted to take a break once we got some temporary measures in place and have a community conversation about what's important about Old Town. The Old Town Strategic Reinvestment Plan is not just about what the vision for Old Town is for the next 20 years, but it's making sure that we have that community conversation. So in the past five or six months, our partners with Dig Studio have been deeply engaged in getting community feedback about what's working well, what's not working well, and what does the community want Old Town to look like for the next 20 years. And so with that, Ryan S., in somewhat a humbling and ironic twist of fate, I can't pronounce his last name, so Ryan S. is going to come up and give this presentation for us. Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
I just want to know.
It's Ryan Sotarakis, in case you need to know. But good evening, everyone. I'm the project manager for this project from Dig Studio, an urban designer and planner, and my colleague Paul Stewart here as well, taking notes. So we wanted to give you a pretty brief update of where the project stands right now and all of the information that we've collected over the past, over the summer and fall. Some of this may be familiar, so I'll go through sort of the earlier engagement first and then bring you up to date on the more recent engagement in the fall. But through the summer, we did a couple of things. We attended various community events, Arvada On Tap, Second Saturday, an open house with the Business Improvement District members, and we also had a corresponding online survey. And this was a high-level survey that was about how often do you visit Old Town? Why do you most frequently visit Old Town? How do you get there? What would you like to see improved or changed? So we had over 1,800 responses to that survey and over 300 one-on-one conversations at the various events. So a couple of the takeaways that we've outlined here, the most common themes that we heard in terms of improvements to Old Town were to design and build a permanent street closure, if you will, expand the closure beyond the three blocks that currently exist. Overhead string lighting has been very popular through the life of the project, very specific.
I see Mrs. Jones had, like many of the 300 conversations.
Improving Old Town Square, activating some of the other streets beyond Old Wadsworth and Grandview, and providing more shade as well was quite, quite common. Then in August, we took all of the information that we'd gathered, all the feedback we'd heard, and we held a two-day workshop charrette here at City Hall with a presentation at the end that I know some of you attended. And that was a really great way to workshop with various city staff from technical committee, historic, community, the bid, et cetera, on various ideas. And what does, what does all this community feedback mean? And what does, how does this get us to a set of guiding principles for this 20-year vision? And I'll go through those in just a second. And then we prepared for a first sort of big public open house that we held in late September at Denver Beer Co. down the street. It was really well-attended. Hard to know, because it was at a brewery, exactly how many people were there for, but the brewery did tell us that it was a much busier crowd than normal. So lots of people, lots of dogs, lots of kids. And the way that we chose to get, collect the feedback from this was we had QR codes on all of the presentation boards that took people to another online survey on Speak Up Arvada. That survey was also live for three weeks. So if people didn't attend the open house, they were able to go online, see all the materials, and that way all the feedback was in one, one place, which made that much simpler. So one of the first questions we asked as part of that was, what is your vision for the future of Old Town? Here's some of the common themes, most common themes that we heard. This was an open-ended question, and we'll use this to come up with a sort of guiding vision statement for the plan. But pedestrian-only and walkable, local businesses, more density, inviting to everyone, families included, clean and safe, more greenery and trees, maintain that connection to transit, maintain the history and character. And lots of folks said keep the parking on the periphery and at the station and weren't too worried about it on the streets within Old Town itself. So importantly here on this slide, only 11 out of 215 open-ended comments were opposed to the street closures in some form.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is this in order? So in...
These are in, yes, they're sort of in ranked order in terms of like what the most, what had the most...
The most popular?
Yeah, most popular, yeah. Again, these were open-ended, so this was, you know, our team's best attempt to kind of distill them down into categories, but yes.
Could you explain what variety of uses means in this context?
Variety of uses, meaning mostly that people were asking for a mix of uses. So residential, commercial, office space, restaurants, bars. We had several comments throughout the life of the project of folks saying that they wanted to make sure that it doesn't just become all restaurants and bars, that they want to make sure there's retail shops, office space, et cetera. So that's, that was some of these comments as well. So then we had already sort of, through the charrette, developed some of these guiding principles. You can see them here at the top: vibrant, resilient, connected, distinct. The next slides will go into a little bit more detail on those, but we asked respondents if they agreed with these as guiding principles for our 20-year vision. Eighty-five percent of folks, and we had about 260 respondents to the survey, agree, eighty-five percent agreed or strongly agreed. And then we went into each of these principles with an outline of different strategies. So what does this mean in the physical space? And then we asked how important those strategies were to achieving that goal. So for achieving a vibrant Old Town, eighty-six percent of folks agreed or strongly agreed with these strategies. Again, eighty-six percent for resilient, eighty-six percent again for a connected Old Town, and eighty-two percent for agreed with the strategies for a distinct Old Town. So really, as we've seen throughout this project, really pretty overwhelmingly unanimous support from day one. We then had worked again at the charrette to come up with a few different alternatives for what a more permanent configuration of the streets in Old Town might look like. And for the purposes of this survey, developed three different alternatives from what is currently there. So the most important things to take away from these are the dark blue blocks are blocks that would be permanently pedestrian space. The teal would be blocks that are, would have the same design treatments, same permanent design treatments, so paving, lighting, landscaping, all of those things, but would still allow vehicle traffic and some, potentially some sort of shared configuration. So there's Fillmore Street in Cherry Creek North is an example of this. Glenwood Springs, I forget the name of the street, has a similar street, sort of curbless, shared space, but that's one option. But the idea is that cars would still be able to access those blocks. So we then asked folks which one of these was their preference. You can see that option two, which was fully pedestrianized four blocks up to Ralston Road, was the most popular. And I will...
Sorry. Is that the same then as the temporary closure we have today?
So it's, that would be an expansion of one block, one block to the north. So currently it ends at Grant Place.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Right.
And sorry, continuing with this particular one and the expansion all the way up, have the business owners in that area already been consulted and are they on board? Or do we have any of that feedback right now as we discuss this proposal?
Yeah, go ahead.
The other Ryan.
I just wanted to, I want to, so these, these are concepts that have been sent to the community. The business people have been involved, although they've not been engineered. They've not been truth-tested. They've not been all the things that need to do. So what we wanted to do is get a general sense of how the community was feeling about things, but we didn't, we don't want to necessarily put these in, as being, these are the concepts that we're going forward with. There's a lot of work that needs to go, and we wanted to have a barometer of where the community was with some of these things. And then we'll take that information and then repackage it into engineered and realistic ways forward. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks. I will say, I will come back to these sort of for our discussion. I think this is an important piece of the conversation tonight. But since the, the public open house and the survey that corresponded with that closed, and we had, attended a bid board meeting and had conversation with them as well, we put together two sort of refined concepts that we want to chat a little bit more about. So I want to finish this quickly and then come back to these and discuss. The next part of the survey was, we, we asked folks what, we gave them a menu of streetscape and design elements and asked them to rank their top three. We also added, again, these are somewhat vague, but the dollar sign symbols sort of correspond to the general price implications of each of these relative to each other. So you can see, number one, the most popular was overhead lighting. Number two was eco-conscious elements, so stormwater planting, solar panels, et cetera. Number three was integrated seating. Four and five, curbless street, quality pavers, public art, on down the list. So what we've said is sort of a key takeaway to this, and this goes on to sort of traditional lighting, traditional benches. And then there was also an option for an open-ended. But what we took away from this, if you look at the top five, particularly the seating, for instance, because there's several other options for seating, is we heard loud and clear that the community wants a cohesive space that's designed as a whole, that doesn't feel like things have been sort of added piecemeal, right? So things that are integrated, high-quality pavers, things of that nature versus sort of movable furnishings. Some of these other from the open-ended accessibility improvements, those would be certainly required in any redesign of the streets. But clear boundaries and at the ends of the pedestrian-only areas is certainly important. More parking, recycled content, and safety improvements overall. So the last piece of this survey and the open house was some con, high-level concept alternatives for Old Town Square. This plan won't get into a full design for the square, but will sort of take, make recommendations on some high-level improvements. So I might actually go to this. This way you can see them side by side. So important here, a focal point, maybe a stage, maybe shade structure, some combination of that. Play would be splash pad, potentially a winter ice rink. Other play features flex space, means sort of that open plaza space where you can have farmer's market, outdoor dining, other times. Green obviously would be more of a grassy landscaped area, and the pavilion is an idea for a structure that could have concessions, restrooms, maintenance facility, skate rentals, those types of things. So three kind of different possible configurations. One and two were pretty similar in how they ranked with folks. Two, just being that there's sort of more of a prominent green space versus more prominent plaza. Three being much more, you know, European town square, Union Station style, urban plaza. That one had the lowest, but not a huge, huge disparity. So that was where we ended with the survey. We'll come back to questions and all that in just a second. Just our next steps. We're working on coming up with a preferred alternative for the streets and the draft of the plan through the end of the year. And then we'll be refining the plan and going into a conceptual design for the streetscapes the first part of next year. So that's that. Any questions or anything we, I would love to talk about a couple of these street alternatives as well.
So my, one piece of feedback is in specific regards to the Old Town Square alternatives, particularly with some of these, and I realize it's all just renderings at this point, but with the trees in the middle, no, I don't think there can be trees inside the middle of the square because the size of the gatherings we have, come the, come two days after Thanksgiving to the Old Town tree lighting, to see for yourself, the size of the crowd in that square, we would eliminate visibility to the stage and the gathering space. So I think of, even though it wasn't as ranked as popular, that, that third one, but to me, just the ability for the, the crowd to be able to gather is critically important for what we do in the square.
Sure. No, that's good to know. Thanks.
And I think a splash pad has, I mean, it's been very successful. I know it's, needs to be updated and improved, but there's nothing better than seeing kiddos out there, you know, on a hot summer day, playing in the fountain. It's just their laughter and just the, I think it makes it very special. So try to keep, keep that as part of it.
Don't try. Do.
Definitely, yeah. We, we heard loud and clear from almost everyone we spoke with, don't take away the splash pads.
Okay.
But a winter activation of that splash pad would be great, too.
Sure. Yes, into a ice rink and, Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate that as, as well. I think, you know, to me, as I go around, that's maybe one of the most iconic spaces and iconic things has, that has become in Old Town. And even if you go to Union Station, it's very similar, you know, with that. I think that adds something that just, there's not a substitute for it or there's, if you take that away to do something else with it, nothing else would be as valuable as that. So on that subject, I would, I would be in the exact same agreement.
And keep Mr. Pfeiffer's clock. Mr. Mormon?
Thank you. I appreciate the work on this. It's exciting stuff to kind of vision and see the options that we have or opportunities. The one thing that I just want to keep bringing up is accessibility. And as, as we think about, you know, continuing to close these streets that we look at as a city investing in some sort of shuttle that can, you know, help people who cannot walk get to those places where the, the parts of the street are closed. So that's, I just want to keep bringing that up.
Sure. Thanks.
I certainly think that's a factor that we've got to weigh into this. Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. So going to some of these options, particularly one and two, I'm really excited...
Are you talking about the street closure?
Uh, this, sorry, my apologies, the preferred streetscape elements.
Ah, yeah.
So I think number two with the eco-conscious elements, parts of this are very easy rockscaping, choosing different plants that are low water, native, whatnot. I think that's very easy stuff. The solar panels, that looks kind of cool, but I'm more interested in the overhead lighting because this is something we've discussed at length. And it has to do with the electrical grid, correct? Or the electrical capabilities of these older buildings?
Correct, yes. I don't know that I'm the best person to answer that question.
Ryan, the other Ryan has become the expert.
Come on, other Ryan. Everything I say has to be the right.
So, so electricity is part of the issue. So number one, we wouldn't take the electricity from the buildings surrounding it. We would take it from our own electricity. However, some of our own electricity is compromised because it runs into the tree wells, for example, and those tree wells get a lot of salt. When you salt the sidewalks and that, it corrodes the conduit that it's in, and so it makes the electrical network that much more vulnerable. So some of the resiliency needs to go to that. So that's number one. Number two is that from a building standpoint, you know, you need to know where you're stringing them from to and fro. And we don't have kind of like the same level on both sides, at the right height and all those things. So the way that this is typically done is that you have poles that have guide wires going from one side to the other. But in order to put the poles in, they have to have quite a substantial foundation. So likely, if it were to go forward, and it being number one, it would probably be a high priority, we would have to look at the areas where those trees that were taken down because they weren't successful in those big planter boxes, which is irrigated now, you'd have to dig down, create foundations there, put poles going up, and then have guide wires. Because the other thing that you have to do is you have to get above the existing street trees, and you have to be high enough to allow a fire truck to go through in an emergency. So there's a, a lot of factors that go into it. The electricity, the anchoring of poles, the putting of poles in, making sure that they're the right height. And then put on top of that, you have RTD on the south side of Grandview, and you can't have things that are in the air there because of the, the guide wires that run the commuter shuttle. So again, from an engineering standpoint, certainly we're going to be looking at overhead lighting, but we're going to have to look at it in the context of all those constraints that come with it.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that explanation because we, we all hear this one quite a lot. Everyone thinks it's like stringing Christmas lights, and so it's nice to have that fuller explanation. Thank you, Ryan.
All right. Ms. Smith?
Yeah, just piggybacking off that, why aren't we just using solar? It combos one and two, right? Like a solar lighting instead of electrical lighting for overhead? My, what?
I'm not, I'm not sure about the reliability of solar overhead lights like that.
So what, what I will say is every option is on the table. This is at a conceptual, and we'll look at those things. We have struggled with solar lights in other parts of the city, and so I'll just make that as a general statement of fact, but that doesn't preclude future iterations of what solar looks like and those types of things. So we are, we're not ruling anything out right now. We'll look at everything. So.
Yep. The other question I just had for round three of community engagement, the numbers for the feedback on the Old Town Square were pretty low. There were 97-ish people. And so I'm wondering for the third round of community engagement, if those posters that you put up at Denver Beer Co., even if they're smaller, we have a little tower in Old Town Square, maybe tower's not the right word, but like a, a little pavilion-ish area, that we could put those mockups, that we could get engagement through that mechanism? Perhaps instead of, because the numbers just seemed pretty low for us to be, I don't know.
Yeah, there were, yeah, there were about 260 respondents to the survey total. It was, one thing to keep in mind is the first survey was open for two months. This one was open for two and a half weeks. But certainly we can, we'll try and go through every avenue for the next round once we have conceptual designs, make sure...
It would be really fun to have the mockups at like one of our big festivals, whether it's the Christmas tree lighting or the St. Patrick's Day, because those are going to be the target audiences that are coming to Old Town for those events. So, and plus, if you, you put them out there in the square, I, or at the junction between Grandview and Old Wadsworth, I can imagine you would have extremely high foot traffic.
Sure. Yep.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
I'm assuming we'll just target the whole city for a survey, not just Old Town? Because I'm sure that people have opinions that don't live in the area. And then going back to your alternatives, your one through 15 or whatever it was, the only thing I would add here is, stop right there, that, that's a good one, is really, I appreciate number two there, but I also talked about accessibility. I think three and four have a higher play in that discussion than zero scaping right now, because the curb does cause a barrier. And as we move into it, we really need to be smooth and across. And so I'm thinking accessibility, even though we don't have a shuttle or something to move certain folks around, we need to at least make it as easy as possible for those that are not. So I, I mean, from an ADA compliance and so forth, obviously, these are just concepts I'm giving. But I would encourage the team to really push those compliances further up in the chain when we look at spending dollars.
Sure. And yeah, you know, it was, it was good to see that a curbless street was so high on the list. And that also doesn't preclude vehicles from being on that as well. So it's something to keep in mind, whether it's a shuttle or the blocks that maybe are open or, excuse me, open sometimes, open seasonally, right? A curbless street certainly gives a lot of flexibility for different things.
Do that. With the integrated seating, I think, for people that need to take a seat when they can't make it across so far. So I think those elevate higher than your current number two. And I just, if we get further down the page, just, I would try to push those further up.
Sure.
So I actually tend to agree. Like, if I could pick my one big pie in the sky item that I would do, I'd get rid of the curbs and I'd make it flat. But my point is, is don't four and five really go together hand in hand? Like, if we're going to eliminate the curbs, we would be doing pavers then and restructuring the surface of the street.
Yeah, most likely. If you were, if you see a, a street that's rebuilt to a curbless condition, usually it's going to have the high-quality pavers. However, you could have a paver-built street that does still have curbs.
Okay, good to know. But yeah, my, my sense is here is four and five are basically the same thing for what we would be discussing in Old Town.
Yeah, you probably wouldn't build a curbless street with asphalt, you know, all the way, or concrete. You could do concrete, yes, but...
Let's, let's talk a little bit about what streets should be closed and how far. I think the, you know, obviously, the issue with existing businesses, both Steve's Meat Market and Rylanders will fight us tooth and nail on closing that northernmost block of Old Wadsworth. So I think we have to factor that into the thinking. You know, I'm sure probably Denver Beer Company and the retail next to Denver Beer Company would love having it closed all the way up.
I agree. And Mayor, I don't believe La dolce Vita would be in favor either, based on my discussions with Debbie.
So, you know, I think that's, that's, we're going to have to do a lot of thinking as it pertains to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So this, this kind of the next two months iteration is really talking about street configuration. When we get into the, the springtime, we're going to be talking about the design elements, about pavers and trees and, and lighting and those types of things. Right now, we're, we are getting feedback on kind of street configuration. I think Ryan's going to explain one of the things in this that it's hard to see on this slide, but how we've expanded some of the teals, what that means, what it could mean for different periods of time, what permanent could mean, so that maybe it's not 24 hours a day, but maybe it's when most of the time people are there. So Ryan's more educated in this than I am, but we are thinking about those things. And even times of the year, getting to things like Steve Meat Markets or whatever when they're busy, because they're closed six months out of the year.
Right.
So there are, there are opportunities if we are open-minded.
Yeah, so what we looked at after the public open house and the, all the feedback from that and conversations with business owners and Business Improvement District members was a little bit of a refinement of the three options that were presented to the community. And so that's what these are here. And this illustrates, the one on the left is basically what is currently there. If you think of the dark blue, meaning it's primarily pedestrian-only space, with the exception of Grandview allowing one-way traffic eastbound. And there's several reasons for possibly considering that. Circulation throughout Old Town, circulation to and from the hub parking garage. The initial phase of community engagement through the summer, we heard over and over and over that the hub is not frequently used by visitors to Old Town for reasons primarily being they find it to be too far or too confusing to access. So because of the right-in, right-out on Old Wadsworth, getting around to the east side of the parking garage, allowing one-way traffic, again, not necessarily all the time, but would help with some of that circulation. The teal then is expanded to include Grandview all the way to Uppam to the east and to the west to Yukon, as well as some additional streetscape treatments on Yukon, one block north to 57th, really helping to tie that into the feeling of the business and retail district, since there are several business and food and beverage locations there. The option on the right is basically the same The option on the right is basically the same, except for Grand View remains closed to vehicle traffic. So, yeah, I guess, we'd love to hear your thoughts.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Hey, so I think we need to wrap this discussion with like the alley lot, or the alleys being utilized differently than they are today. I mean, we're, I don't think we're maximizing this opportunity without including the alleys. Because I think like Steve's Meat and Rylanders and those, maybe they can reinvent themselves and think about using the alley for that access versus always have to have a frontage street. Because really, what I see of those two businesses is people are just coming to the side or the back anyways. So if we can look at, how do we maximize the alley for that kind of service? Maybe that's something we can think of. Plus, we thought of activating the alleys at one point. I don't know, that wasn't in the discussion either. I think that might be a better place for your lighting than over the streets, which are challenging. Because, Ryan, why didn't you have that done already? But maybe the alleys could be somewhere where that kind of, I don't know, is it called the Milk Dairy District downtown?
Dairy Block.
The Dairy Block, that is super awesome. I think some feel around that would have been something I would have looked for around the alley. So maybe we should keep that in consideration when we're dealing with the challenges of egress and ingress for specifically those two businesses.
Sure, and when we do get to sort of a preferred option, you know, again, we'll work with city traffic engineers and our transportation consultants on the team to make sure that whatever the direction is, does work, alleys and streets and all of that access, for sure.
One of the things with regard to the alleys is that urban renewal is going to be undergrounding a lot of the utilities through there. It's really going to look, it's going to be greatly improved.
Should it widen it or anything? Will it improve any of...
I wouldn't say widen it per se.
I would assume the gas meters and stuff would push away and some other of those things?
It's more the electrical. It's a lot of the transformers that are up in the air are going to come down the ground level, actually, so.
So I think you gained something. I think there's something to be said around doing something here. I just don't know what that is. But I feel like we can maximize that asset for Old Town.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. To Mr. Pfeifer's point, I love the alley Dairy Block, particularly the one that has the wine bar there. No, 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 we had a, we had a work party there, and I remember thinking how beautiful it was, and then that was like the business. Yeah, and they had heat lamps and red lights. And in particular, the location where I could see that really being effective would be this block off of Gran Boot Avenue to the west of Old Wadsworth, behind like Smokin' Fins and Crystal Joys, and then behind Elevated Seltzer and the Brewery. Those particular shared spaces, I could see a lot of fun activation there, and it helps us extend, because that's always been one of our kind of issues, is how do we extend the foot traffic to those businesses on the backside of Old Town that are still part of Old Town? But a lot of people who, unless they're native to the area, don't really think about them or know that they're there. And it feels just a little bit different. And so how do we keep the foot traffic moving that way and then get it down to flights where the true end is? So I feel like that particular alley offers a lot of opportunity to help us solve that challenge, and just naturally has the right alignment of businesses in that space. And then the other thing I was thinking, due to traffic flow, looking at this first one, this first preferred or proposed promenade alternative refined, where the traffic can turn east off of Old Wadsworth and go through. My wonder is, why aren't we extending the closure then down another block? And I realize it's because we probably want the traffic coming west to be able to turn right there by Gran Boot Tavern. But my sense is, is that's probably less necessary. So I know those businesses on that block feel very left out, that they're not part of the street closures. And they can't be because of the RTD. We have to have somewhere for some traffic to go. But my sense is, is if we keep it the way it is now, then that's fine, because it has been working. But if we are going to open up that through traffic in front of the bank in the square there, then we should probably consider heavily extending the closures at least another block to capture the tavern and the Bluegrass and those other businesses that would love to be part of the closures.
Sure, and one thing to keep in mind about these is that the teal zone, that the whole zone, basically, think of it as one cohesive space, one design treatment. So the same paving, the same lighting, there may just be traffic allowed sometimes. So that was one thing I think I didn't mention was, you know, that even, this is all sort of meant to be flexible in the ideal scenario. So while they may be open to traffic sometimes, maybe during the week, but they're closed on the weekends, there's, there's lots of different ways that that can be engineered. So in some ways, the idea is to extend it, yes, to the whole sort of blue and teal area. It's just that some of the blocks may allow traffic now and then.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
I see no other questions or comments. Thank you for your good work, and keep digging in.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Ms. Gillis, do you want to kick us off for our second one?
Sure, Kelly Van Brugan's going to talk to us about micromobility.
Thank you. Good evening. I am the Bike and Pedestrian Coordinator, and I have been working with our Public Works team over the last year to oversee the shared micromobility pilot program. So we are here tonight to talk a little bit about what we found from both our community outreach, but also the data that we've collected since January. We officially launched the program in January of this year to allow private companies to operate bicycles, shared e-bikes, or shared e-scooters. We've had one vendor throughout the entirety of our pilot program, Bird, that has assisted us in maintaining the program over this past year. And this has really given us an opportunity to look at the rules and regulations that have been set in place, and gain a better understanding of if this is working for the community, and what are the concerns that need to be addressed. So kind of diving a little deeper, the purpose is to evaluate the use, safety, and overall performance of the shared micromobility program. During this pilot, we've worked with Bird to manage the operations of the program, educate the public, and then also engage with the community to gain insights about how it's being used. A big part of our engagement has been kind of threefold. We've maintained an e-mobility email account through the city, where people can come and provide comments about the program or submit issues that they're seeing with that. And we try to respond on a very timely basis with that. We've also received Ask Arvada tickets through our portal. So again, trying to be responsive to the issues that are coming up during this pilot. And then, we also updated the Speak Up Arvada page in July, where we hosted a survey for about a month, so the end of July through most of August, where we asked people their thoughts and opinions on the program, from a community perspective, but also ridership perspective, those who have participated in the program. Another major component to this was trip data. So we partnered with Dr. Cog, and they have a contract with Ride Report. So our access to the system Ride Report gave us real-time information. So if we got contacted by a constituent and they were having an issue, we could help them access which scooter was the problem and get that information off to the vendor. But also, it gives us an analysis tool. So we were able to look at where are people riding the scooters? Where are they parking, picking up? Where are the rebalancing efforts happening? That really kind of gave us a lot of the underlying information for developing the report. So a little bit about the numbers. Our official launch was in January, so January twenty-sixth. We looked at data through September thirtieth for this report. In that timeframe, we had over ten thousand trips on the scooters. The median trip distance was about point-six miles, and that equates to about five-point-eight minutes of trip time on those. In the survey, we asked individuals about their last scooter trip, and if they didn't have access to a scooter, what mode of transportation would they have used? Forty percent of them responded that it would have replaced in the automobile trip, so single occupancy vehicle, carpooling, or ride share. And so from that, we make an estimate that about two thousand four hundred and forty miles were offset from automobile trips, which would equate to approximately one metric ton of reduced CO2 emissions.
Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, so do you know how these, these numbers, you know, trip numbers and average distance and all that kind of stuff, compare to other places where scooters have been around for a little longer, like whether it be downtown or other, maybe even smaller places than downtown?
Yeah, so we have, with Dr. Cog, that shared portal, we have a lot of information that other communities have input. There hasn't been a really great direct comparison because we're looking at lifetime spans of the program rather than like, I can't drill down to what this last year has looked like. I think, based on the amount of vehicles that we have out there, we're pretty comparable to some of the other smaller communities.
So you think utilization in and around Arvada is, is the same as if it was in downtown Fort Collins? Or if it's, I mean, downtown Denver, I think, is a different animal. But we're not shy on utilization, or we're not over, or we're not strong utilization? We're average?
I would say so. And industry standards typically looks at, like, when you want to increase the amount of scooters, you want to have like three trips per scooter per day. We're not reaching that. We're a little bit on the lower side of probably about one trip per scooter per day, based on the amount of scooters that are out there at this time.
And how many do we have out?
Bird has the capability of going up to two hundred. We average probably about eighty-five.
About eighty-five, okay, thanks.
Okay, so kind of diving into some of those key findings. Overwhelmingly, we heard scooter parking is a big frustration to residents. That's pretty common among a lot of communities that have these types of programs in place. But specifically with the survey that we did, nearly eighty percent of survey respondents agreed or strongly agreed that e-scooters are improperly parked. We also heard anecdotally through our e-mobility email account, and then again, during the survey, that there were sightings of people believed to be underage using scooters. We do have with our vendor, they're supposed to be a certain age in order to have the app and purchase a ride. Since we don't have any data on our end through Ride Report or from our vendor about the age of the ridership, that's something we would be willing to kind of dive further into. Another aspect of that might be the rise of personal e-scooter uses, and being kind of confused between whether this is part of the program or a personal device. And then lastly, rules and regulations. So we asked a three-part question in the survey. We asked if, how supportive people were of the program as it currently exists. Then we asked if there were more rules and regulations in place, what their support level would be. And then a follow-up to that is an open-ended question where we asked, what rules and regulations would you like to see put in place to address issues? We did notice a shift between the program as it currently exists to more rules and regulations. We had about ten percent that moved from the unsupportive into the no opinion or supportive category. Before I get into the recommendations, I just wanted to mention some ongoing progress. So again, overwhelmingly, we heard that scooter parking is an issue in the community. So in the meantime, during this kind of end part of the pilot program, we have purchased five micromobility racks. Those were purchased with the municipal fees that the vendor paid in order to get the permit. Those are what those fees are intended for, is to install infrastructure to help with the program. So we took a database approach to this, and we, we're working on installing all five of them. Two are currently up. We looked at high-demand areas, so where we're seeing high pickup and high drop-off sites, so that we could provide a space that would collect the scooters in a more orderly fashion. If you notice, you can pull the scooter in and set it to the side. It's much harder for it to tip over due to wind or somebody bumping into it. And we're looking at, kind of evaluating through the end of this pilot, how those are functioning.
So where are our high-use areas?
We have a lot. So Old Town, obviously, is probably our highest-use area. We wanted to keep these out of Old Town and maybe use more of the bike parking in those locations to maintain an aesthetic. But we see a lot of these in park areas, where people are picking up and dropping off, or at apartment complexes. Another high-use area is the Walmart over on Ralston. So one of the micromobility parking locations is, or racks is installed over there.
Great, thanks.
I will also mention, we have additional vendor interest in the program. Lime has submitted an application to operate in the city. We have been in conversation about the status of the pilot project. So their application is sitting in process and will remain in the system until we have some direction from City Council on the status of this program. So our recommendations. We provided three options on the recommendation of the continuation or discontinuation of the program. The first and preferred recommendation would be to extend the pilot program with updates to the rules and regulations. So really taking the feedback that we heard from the community and implementing that in some updates, taking a look at parking and reporting requirements, making sure we have a lot more data about how quickly it takes our vendors to get out there and address issues. Second option would be to make the program permanent, again, with those updates to the rules and regulations, but looking long-term. So a lot of the devices being used are on our low-stress, low-volume and speed roads. They're utilizing the bike network on-street and off-street on the trails. And so bolstering that infrastructure to make sure that all users of the transportation network have a safe place to be. And then finally, the third option would be to discontinue the program, noting that we have made some changes through this process. And with the pilot program, we allowed e-bikes and e-scooters to be on our trail network. So looking at continuing that if the program was to discontinue. The last three bullet points are mostly related to if there was some continuation of the program. So looking at reevaluating our goals. When the Transportation Advisory Committee had first met, When the Transportation Advisory Committee had first met, they talked about the first-last-mile connection to transit. Our data is showing that that's not necessarily the main reason people are using scooters. It's pretty low. In fact, so talking about if this is primary goal or kind of a secondary goal where we need to put some more education or thought into that. Also looking at establishing proactive vendor oversight and audits. One of the things that we learned from some other communities during this pilot program is that they go out on a routine basis and evaluate the parking of the scooters. So what scooters are in compliance, what's not in compliance? Are we seeing some trends in different areas and how we can be more proactive with the vendor about addressing those? And then finally, really hitting home on the parking is evaluating the benefits of strategically placed parking zones. So they don't necessarily have to be those micro mobility racks, but maybe they're painted areas or digital areas where the vendor can have that option on their app and encourage people to park in certain places. That's what I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Mormon, you're first.
Thank you. So on the parking issue, I'm thinking of what I've seen bike systems set up where you have to, you know, check out the bike in a rack and you have to put it back in that rack so that the system credits you for returning it. Is that something possible? Because I know, you know, changing behavior of the customer is hard and then putting that onus on the system operator. So is there, are there systems like that that really then help correct more of the behavior of the customer and help address this type of problem?
Yeah, so that would be more of a fixed system. There's good and bad to them, or pros and cons, I shouldn't say bad. Where you might not have people making those trips if there's not a fixed stop nearby where they want to go. It does make it a lot more orderly, I will say. Some programs have done encouragement where they encourage riders to go to a different locate, or go to a location where they need those devices. And maybe your next checkout is free, like the $1 fee to unlock and then you pay per minute. But I think we're not opposed to that, but it makes it a little bit more difficult for people to get to the specific location that they want.
And is there a reason why e-bikes haven't been used yet? Is that the choice of the vendor or our choice in our agreement? Or why have we not seen that yet?
That's a great question. So Bird does not provide that. They have solely e-scooters. We have been talking with Lime about their fleet. They do both, e-bikes and e-scooters. Part of, I think the conversation to be had with e-bikes is the boundary of our pilot program. We have one mile around each of the G-line stations. And with an e-bike, you can travel a lot farther utilizing those. And so if we wanted to talk about how that would function. And also, I think with the vendors, they typically see a lot more profit from the e-scooters rather than the e-bikes. And it's a lot more work to maintain and operate because you're going out to a farther distance to rebalance those bikes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pfeifer?
So if, well, man, if, so if, if the use of the scooters is not for transit, mass transit, trains and so forth, but yet we put them around the train stations and they're not using them for the trains. Seems like you should use the bikes. Just because I think your user base is using it not as we intended in your pilot. So just a comment. The other thing is, is I've never been a fan of limiting these to one-mile radius. And I didn't hear you anything say about, well, I guess I don't know what your recommendation is. You gave us three options, but I don't know which one you're recommending.
To continue with the pilot program.
To continue with the pilot programs?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't like, we can do pilots all day long and never move anything. So there must be a data point here that has shown that this has been successful or not. Because this has been on for what, eight months now? So I think I need more data. And I think you have it or somebody has it that would show, like where are these being used? What's the heat map on this thing? What is it, what do they, you know, you gave us like, well, they're going a half-mile or .6 miles, they're riding for five minutes. It would be interesting on where they were going. When John was in front of us, that's what I, I didn't think there should be a limit. And to see if people were using it to the Arvada Center. Or going to shopping districts that are not right within a mile on all of these. I mean, they kind of are in some, but you know, where are they going from and to? I know, being out west, I see a lot of personal scooters being used to get to the store or, you know, and that's sprawled out there. So I think we need to look at this at a citywide. Especially, I think alone, the car removal that you have in the data that shows, why are we piloting? I don't, I don't get why we would pilot more. It shows clearly that we've made an impact by 85 scooters being on the road. Let's move forward with a permanent program. I don't, I don't know what the rules and regulations you'd be proposing. So it sounds like the way the program was structured, was there negative feedback? Or was there laws that they recommended, other than I don't like it in front of my house? Or I don't like it on the corner? Because, I mean, it's going to happen.
Right, and we're trying to be responsive to the community feedback that we've received. Especially with the parking issues and talking about how we mitigate that in the future. And if that is more of a rules and regulations versus an operation and maintenance with our vendors, so.
Because I thought that was within the contract, in the pilot, that they were to respond on a complaint. So I don't know why we need to look at that more if it's in our contract. Just have them be accountable to the contract more than rules and regulations. Follow the contract we wrote with them, you know, that's what I would recommend. I would also talk to our sister cities that have it a little bit more. I mean, these are, there's no reason for us to go through, like this is a new thing. Denver's had them for years and I know Denver, like I think John's put as a different beast, but they're in other suburbs now and they've been there for quite some time. And we should be leveraging their lessons learned instead of continuing a pilot. I think we should just, I think you've gotten enough data to move forward, so. But I would like to see, maybe not here right away, but maybe this week in a weekly memo, if we can get, like where are they being used? Like where is their origination and where is their destination?
Are you getting that information? Do you have a heat map?
We do. We included a lot of information in that report as well that we provided, but I can.
The appendix to this, the appendix?
Yes, the appendix to this. Yep. So we have heat maps of where they're riding, where we have a lot of curb events. So looking at those start-stop points. But if you would like any, like data disseminated even further, let me know.
And fair enough, I, yeah, I haven't gone through the whatever pages of the appendix, so I'll just have to spend time reading it. I think it's time to move forward with this where other cities have done it. So I'd be more making the program permanent.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. So yeah, the heat map, I'm looking at it now. It's helpful to kind of get us an idea. And I also tend to agree that if we were to move forward, I think I'd like to see a larger boundary to see if that does encourage more trips outside. Because looking at the heat map, yes, we, it does become less and less the further away you go. But that makes some sense. And I remember driving down 66th one time past Seacrest Elementary and seeing one in front of somebody's house. And I'm like, somebody actually took a scooter home probably from Old Town. That's kind of awesome. And sure enough, it eventually disappeared. So my question, before I give more thoughts on other things, is do they, do the people bring them back or does Bird come around and find all their scooters, pick them up and take them where they're supposed to be? And how often does that happen?
It's both. I think a lot of those kind of outlier ones, they get picked up on a, probably not as frequent basis. They look at the battery life of those and so determine which ones need to be picked up first and rebalance what has battery life and makes sense to put back out in different areas. So I would say a lot of times it's probably the rebalancing efforts of the vendor rather than somebody riding it to their house and then riding back somewhere.
And what's the frequency of the pickup on average?
I believe that they're out there on a daily basis. I see them in Old Town on a regular basis. They have a small little pickup truck where they're putting them up, just like in the picture. Going into different areas, also addressing some of those concerns where the scooters have been knocked over. We have seen areas where there's a lot more of that happening. So they keep an eye on those specific locations on a more regular basis.
Okay, and my thought is, so I tried a scooter in Denver once, I won't lie, I hated it. I was very bad at it and I nearly broke an ankle. So not for me personally. But when I tried to park the thing, it told me I wasn't allowed to right there. And it made me move it several feet over. Do we have that in Old Town and being like, no, I'm not going to stop charging you money until you put me back where I'm supposed to go?
Is not my understanding that it does that. But it does make you take a picture at the end of your ride where you submit it so that they can go back and evaluate. We have talked with the vendor about potentially where we're having a lot of these issues. See if there's repeat offenders. In other communities, they've gone and kind of revoked access for a little while to people who aren't parking in the correct locations, even fully suspending them from utilizing the program. So those are options too beyond just requiring certain parking locations.
Okay, that, okay, I understand. Because I agree with you, you know, in certain end destinations, particularly in our parks and our neighborhoods, it makes no sense to have a designated parking as long as it's not right on the curb. But in Old Town in particular, maybe by the Walmart, I love the idea of the parking stalls and even just painted zones or whatnot. That way, if it is in Old Town, it has to go to a specific place. Because there's not much difference between one side of the block or the other for most, vast majority of our residents. So I think that would go a long way to easing some of the consternations of citizens about improper parking as if we actually had zoned parking and you weren't allowed to stop being charged money until you parked it in one of those designated spots.
Ms. Marriott?
Thank you. So after seeing the presentation and looking at the heat map and all that stuff, I get scooters parked in front of my house. Honestly, doesn't bother me a bit. And in fact, they don't stay there long. I think the company is doing a really good job. And I will mention that the object of this isn't just that you drive to Old Town and then get on a scooter and ride around and then drive back home. Would be, if you use the app, you can see, oh, there's one around the corner from my house. I'm going to walk over there and get that scooter and go to Old Town with it, leave it there and grab a different one and go home when I go home. So they do have to be dispersed and there's not always a perfect parking place for all. And I know different people have different tolerances for a scooter on the sidewalk in front of their house or not. But my recommendation would be, I would extend the pilot program with a big change. I would allow Lime into the market too. And I think that makes a, quite a big difference because you go from a single vendor in the market to competing vendors in the market. And that competition between vendors will be quite a big change. And I think whatever program we have permanently would most likely include at least two, you know, more than one vendor. And I think learning more from a pilot program about how it works once there's two different vendors competing for the same number of riders, I think that's a big difference. I think as far as updating rules and regulations, I think that's a great idea. I think taking the lessons learned from this phase of the pilot program and developing answers to the problems and then testing those answers out in a continuation of a pilot program while you inject competition into the market for these is a good idea. I do agree with my fellow colleagues about, I wouldn't see any problem with the area being expanded by which they go in. I know in my neighborhood, I see more of them at Walmart than anywhere else. I think, I think they're not used for the transit much at all. I see them down at I-70 in Kipling in front of my business too. We see them parked down there and they, you know, so they go quite, quite a distance.
So do we have a geofence right now? Do we have a?
They are.
They are?
They are in the pilot program. We have a sort of geofence area in Old Town where it reduces the speed so they can't be at their top 15 miles an hour.
But distance-wise, we don't have?
No, just at the pilot program boundary.
Okay, good.
Yeah, but anyway, so that would be my recommendation. I think, you know, the people I talk to, my neighbors and whatnot, this is one of those kind of polarizing issues. Some people are very for it, some people are very against it. There doesn't seem to be a whole lot in the middle in respect to the people who are very against it. I would, I would continue with another pilot with an extension of a pilot program because if nothing else, it forces a check-in. And the conclusion of another phase of a pilot program, if there's answers to some of those problems that the rules and regulations have answered. And if the injection of competition into the market hasn't caused a whole slate of new problems, it can easily be made permanent then if that's the case. Or obviously the other, the opposite could happen and then we would know what we would want to make permanent, which might be a limitation on numbers of vendors or numbers of units or something to keep things in hand. So that'd be my recommendation.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, just echoing some of them, I definitely agree we should be expanding out the pilot area if we continue with the pilot. And the other is, there are people, as Councilmember Simpson said, that are uncomfortable with scooters. So exploring the use of e-bikes, they're coming one way or another. So we need to normalize it and get used to how that looks and how we operate in the city with it. So those two of expanding out to e-bikes and expanding the radius, if we continue with the pilot, would be my recommendation.
Because I do use the e-bikes, I just don't use.
You're out of order. Mr. Mormon, give him a chance.
Thank you, yes. I agree with what's been said as far as, especially expanding the program and the area that it covers in the e-bikes. Because I think we'll see, I mean, I think this is encouraging, the results we've seen thus far on how much use this is getting out of the pilot. So I think it is time for us to grow. I also think we can learn a lot from our neighboring communities that have done this before us. So as far as the rules and regulations and how to deal with the parking, I think let's really go to what lessons have been learned there and try to implement that as we go about doing the next step.
Great.
Now, Ms. Simpson, it's your turn.
I was just interjecting to support Ms. Smith's point that I do use the e-bikes. I'm terrified of the scooters, but I can use a bicycle. And so anyway, I agree with that and I agree with Mr. Marriott's point. I'd like to extend the program to collect more data with those rules and regulations, see what they are, see how well they work if they address a lot of these more chronic issues that we've been seeing. And then my, just a quick question, you mentioned underage riders. What is the age limit?
16.
16? Then I think one of the interesting things, particularly if we expand this, would be looking at the high schools and how well it performs there. Because a lot of these kids, you know, does it, does it get them out of cars or does it help them when they're walking? I'd be very interested in that data if we expand it out to cover the high schools.
Mr. Pfeifer?
So heat maps. Those are just blobs that was there. Can we get granular of like where they originate and start, like a true heat map? Because you can't even tell what roads you're talking about on there. It's just saying Arvada was some color. We need granular because if there isn't, I heard there was a geofence. That's originally what John proposed, was a one-mile geofence. You mentioned it too. If that was not there, then I'm more interested in how far did they really go? Because one of the concerns I had was they'd get halfway to Arvada Center and then it just turned off. And I hopefully, it sounds like that geofencing was not turned on. Because this semi thing, heat map thing, looks like it did go a little further, but I can't tell how far they went out. I do see on the roads, the following ones, they show roads that they frequent. So that's pretty interesting too because there's a gap between the roads. So how did they get over into a road that's more than a mile away? It's like somebody lifted it up and took it somewhere and didn't ride it from the pilot area. So can we get more granular data of just where the frequency of use? I don't need the origination and end. I'd just like to see the true streets that they're using.
Yeah, I can go back in and get some more information.
Kind of just see the popularity based on the heat going out. Because I mean, I'm interested, did they get to Lake Arbor? Did they get, did they get up to 80th and Wadsworth? Did they, you know? Because I think that's what we're going to see the use, is people going and doing shopping or doing something. And I think this is a great program to just say, citywide, just see what it does. Rules and regulations, I can't jump on the rules and regulations because I'm not sure I'm seeing that in your presentation of what those are. So for me to jump on that bandwagon, I don't know what the proposal is for rules and regulations other than we don't like where they're parking, there's underage riders. And I'm surprised my Councilmember Marriott would be okay with more rules and regulation. When we can't even enforce the ones we have through a contract. So let's go back to the contract and hold whatever in our contract with the mobility. And like the picture that's in here, they show three scooters. They look like they were pushed down. So we have to put some consideration that it's not always the provider's fault. But it's how they respond to a complaint. And they need to understand that we're not pointing at them that they're customers and you are horrible and you can't keep your scooters up. We just have to come to the acceptance that there's just people that are just going to shove them down or the wind's going to blow them down and things just happen. You know, maybe a good citizen should just stand them back up. But, you know, maybe we're not that kind of society anymore. But the point is, 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 is let's hold them to the contract and not look at more rules and regulations that we will not enforce. Because what I hear is, sorry, John didn't bring this up, is more FTEs to do this work. And so, you know, to do the inspections and the follow-up and to see what's going on. So I'm, I'm good with moving forward with, and we can always, it's not, just because we move forward with a permanent program, doesn't mean it can't change or evolve or adapt. I think the contract throws some spins to that. But I think there's opportunities to allow competition in, open up the program and use what our sister and brother cities do and implement those, those ideas and adjust as we need them.
Okay, we've given you lots of input. Ms. Gillis, do you feel like you've got enough of a sense of the direction council wants to go?
I do. We'll provide you some extra information in the weekly and where we're at.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. We, Urban Renewal took the scooters out to do a tour of the Urban Renewal area and we all survived. Nobody got hurt, but it was, it was a great experience, so. I wore a helmet, yes, yes. I strongly recommend wearing a helmet. Thank you, very good. Ms. Gillis, that's the end of our workshop. Ms. Gillis, that's the end of our workshops for tonight. I know we've got at least a couple of things that we've been talking about that you'd like to get some closure on. One of them, let's have a brief discussion on the Spark Hire. This was the concept that I brought about using that, that service for being able to assist us with the interview process for our boards and commissions. What's, where are people on that? Mr. Marriott?
So personally, I think we're doing it right, the way we're doing it. I, I realize that it's an evening that we spend doing interviews to, to fill these, but I think this is, these are important, it's an important function that we perform and I think it's efficient. I don't think it really is difficult for the city team. There's a little bit of support from city team members there, but I'm really not in favor of, of, of changing it up. I don't see a better outcome and, and I don't see it necessarily as being any, maybe slightly less time for us, but we kind of signed up for this. So for myself, I would be in favor of changing it.
Any others? Lisa?
I think it's more efficient for the people that are applying, their time is valuable and they're volunteers, so I think it's helpful to do. I think it's more efficient. I think we can standardize the way that we're interviewing, maybe a rubric, I don't know, just throwing it out there. But, and, and just making it a little more streamlined, I think would be helpful for people, because sometimes we go over and they're waiting a long time, so I would appreciate using it.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I would agree. I, I like doing the process, but I wonder if a video interview is more productive for their time, because it's a five-minute speed date and they sometimes spend twenty to thirty minutes to get here. So is there a better use of their time to do this interview process?
So you, you sort of lean towards doing it?
Well...
You want to do a pilot program?
Yeah, it's, I'm, I'm, it's a, it's an in-betweener. I'm on the fence, because again, I, I really enjoy the process, the way we do it today, but I feel bad to the point that it's just, we've got five minutes with them or ten minutes or whatever the amount of the time is. It's never long enough, so, Ms. Gillis.
Are you thinking of Zoom?
Yes.
Not, or Spark Hire?
No, no, no. I was thinking of, instead of us doing, we would do like a Zoom meeting. So they're waiting in a waiting room at their house.
Okay.
Oh. Mr. Pfeifer?
So, you know, I was on board with the Spark interview as well, as maybe an application process to help us just kind of speak through it. The only issue I have, and I talked to Kristen about this, is accessibility. Knowing our demographics, I think we need to be thoughtful in having different ways for people to apply. Because the way we have it now, like John says, I agree with him. It, it's, it works, it's, it's, it's fine. But I will also say, younger generations probably think that's archaic. And a Spark interview might, you know, for kids on the go and want to volunteer, makes sense for them, they can do it on their phone and get it out. Retired population might like the old-fashioned paperwork, whereas I think we need to just think about different ways in which they could submit that's accessible, not in accessible as in a disability, but accessible in a way of, a diversity of ways of submitting your application of interest. And maybe Spark may, or maybe it's a video or maybe it's Google Forms instead, or you know, some sort of online form that you can apply, or it can be faxed and like some of the folks probably did. Because some of those are handwritten, if you remember, if you go through them, I don't know, have you guys been through them yet? Has Lisa been through them?
Yeah.
So you know, some of them are handwritten out and photocopied and stuff, so surprised they're not carbon copied yet. But, but I think keeping that accessibility. Now, the other thing is, is also folks don't have computers, so that's why I don't want to go one way or the other, because if we don't, if they don't have computers and they still want to volunteer, we need to have an option for them to come to City Hall, get to a computer, fill out the form, and that takes staff time. So as you, you know, I'm, I'm all about efficiency, but I'm also accessibility to get the diversity of applicants.
This is really helping a lot. Ms. Simpson?
I, I tend to agree with Mr. Pfeifer. I think there are some people who very much prefer the in-person engagement. There are some people who it's very difficult to do the in-person engagement, maybe they don't have a babysitter for that night or they don't want to hire a babysitter for, you know, for twenty bucks, thirty bucks to come into City Hall for an hour. It's very difficult for them. Or they don't have a computer, there's, or maybe they're just under the weather that day and they don't want to lose their one interview opportunity. You know, there's lots of different factors. So I, I kind of like the idea of just having both options available.
A hybrid.
A hybrid, thank you.
Mr. Mormon?
That's where I was going. I was going to suggest a hybrid, so I'm, I'm in favor of, of giving it a shot and seeing how it works and how, from our end and then also letting the opportunity for folks to try it if they want to from their end.
Boy, does that give you direction.
That was really helpful. You know...
To a hybrid, too.
To everything. So, so on the hybrid, and, and we can do this, there is a cost, which was explained in the weekly. So this first round, we can get in and we can do it for three thousand and give it a test run. But if we bring it on as a normal process, we're going to go up substantially. On the hybrid, we're, we're going to have to figure out how to manage this, because my understanding of hybrid that you're suggesting is applicant you pick. So whether you want to come in. And so they have to determine what they want to do. And then we'll have to shuffle with council, figuring out how to run through those, because having some in and some out and knowing that you'll be able to judge the candidates fairly inconsistently regardless of how they come in, because you'll have some that can do a really snappy video and others that won't be as snappy or be here. So just want to make sure the equity and the, and the evaluation can be done successfully if there's a variety, not all one way or the other.
Yep.
Could I clarify my comments?
Yeah, Ms. Pfeifer.
I, I break this into two phases, right? You have the application itself and then the interview itself. So, and, and I kind of probably blended that in my statement. So in the front, is there different ways to submit an application, writing, online, video?
Oh yeah, we have that capability, not, not video.
No, but...
But...
But yeah, but you know...
To narrow it down to the people that we bring in for the interview.
Yeah, bringing the interview, I think, I'm okay with a hybrid or we make them all Zoom, I think.
No, I think you make them all paper for that, or, or...
In person?
No. No, for the initial application, you submit an application either in paper or online, which is how we do it now.
Is it online?
Yes.
Yes.
They could do it through a form.
And then we, we go through those and say, okay, we want to bring in, because we'll say, we want to bring in four people to interview for, for this one position or whatever.
Yeah.
And then those four people, what I'm envisioning would then either have the option of coming in personally or pre-record through Spark or whatever, their, their applic, their thing. And then we could just sit here on the night of the interviews, go through the ones that have gone through Spark and then go through the ones who are showing up for personal interviews. Does that make sense?
Kristen saw the demo of Spark Hire, so I'm going to ask her to share her thinking on this.
And I'm just wondering if, first off, with the interview, if we offered a in-person interview or a Zoom interview?
Uh huh.
Do you, additional that they would be able to submit? Is there going to be interview questions that we would give them, that they would answer then in a format like Spark Hire? I mean...
Then you'd need a rubric.
Yes.
Well, I, I was thinking...
Well, then we could just do Zoom instead of doing Spark.
Zoom or in-person, we could offer that easily.
Because I...
Why don't we start there? That's a great idea.
Because I think the costs of Spark is pretty high and so...
Not initially, but it jumps up if we...
So I think, I think that the interview should be Zoom or in-person, you pick.
I think that's going to help resolve this issue. Great.
Thank you. We're, we're really good with Zoom or in-person.
Okay, great.
And let them choose and we'll schedule accordingly.
Well, and to that point, I mean, I'm still fine sitting with Mr. Pfeifer in a conference room to do those Zoom calls. I think it would be beneficial for us to be the guys that...
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Sure, just do them the same night. Just go through the ones that are... Okay, Ms. Gillis, did you have anything else that you wanted, you know, since I brought one up, do you have anything else that you want us to arm muscle over?
I have fourteen.
Fourteen?
Well, I really do, but I just want to get two more on the NLC. Some of you have not responded and we want to book some hotel rooms, so if you're planning to go to that, please let myself or Tara know.
I'm not able to go, so you can take me off the list. I'm not going either.
I'm going as long as I'm not discriminated against.
We, we got you covered, so we have...
Yes.
And you, you were holding for, Lauren. Okay.[1699.33]